Good evening and welcome to the City of West Covina Planning Commission, June 22, 2021, 7:00 p.m., regular meeting. The regular meeting of the Planning Commission is now called to order. We will now take a moment for silent prayer or meditation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Commissioner Williams.
Paulina, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Here.
Commissioner Hing? Vice Chair Lewis?
Here.
Chair Becerra?
Here. Does anyone at this time have any changes to the minutes of June 8, 2021? Hearing none, the minutes of June 8, 2021 are approved and submitted. Moving to oral communications, this is the time when any member of the public may speak to the commission on any matter within the scope of duties assigned to the commission relating to non-agendized or consent calendar items. Other matters included in this agenda may be addressed when that item is under consideration. For all oral communications, the chairperson may impose reasonable limitations on public comments to assure an orderly and timely meeting. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the Planning Commission and staff's ability to respond to public comments at this meeting. Thus, your comments may be agendized for a time for a future meeting or referred to staff. The commission may ask questions for clarifications if desired at this time. By policy, the commission oral communications at this time on the agenda is limited to a total of 15 minutes. Persons who are not afforded the opportunity to speak at this time may do so under continuation of oral communications later on the agenda. Tonight, we have one public hearing. Paulina, who will present the staff report?
Excuse me, Chair, just for the record, could we make sure that, just check to see if there's any public that wants to make public comment?
Sure.
Excuse me, are they here for the public hearing or for general public comment? Okay.
So it doesn't look like we have any public comments, Madam Chair. So, Madam Chair, our planning consultant, Jeff Hamilton, will provide the presentation for tonight's public hearing.
Chair and members of the commission, before you tonight is a proposal for a residential housing project at 1616-16 West Cameron Avenue. This project involves a precise plan, tentative track map, general plan amendment, and tree removal permit. There was also an environmental document prepared for the project, and the environmental consultant is here to provide additional detail about that later in the presentation. The project site is a three-and-a-quarter acre site currently occupied by existing office buildings, parking, and landscaping. The site is rectangular. It'll be constructed with 84 units of townhouse residential. Each unit will have two-car garage. Each of the buildings are three stories tall. In addition to the required two-car parking for each unit, there'll be 15 additional parking spaces located in various portions of the site. The buildings along Cameron Avenue, the two 12-unit buildings along Cameron Avenue incorporate a stoop front entry, a raised sort of stoop as required by the downtown plan. Each unit on the project has at least 101 square feet of private open space, and there are landscape buffers along the property boundaries. On the site plan, you can see on the aerial, or I mean, on the screen, there are some project details that include showing that the setback from the street along Cameron is at least five feet. There'll be a seven-foot, 7.2-foot setback along sort of the northwest side, a seven-and-a-half-foot setback along the southeast side, and there'll be a roughly 50-foot setback from the property line to the closest building adjacent to the, abutting the single-family homes along Sawyer Avenue behind the property. The project has a 26-foot drive aisle for around most of the site, providing access to the units. The drive aisle along Sawyer, along the Sawyer side, sort of the west side of the site, that'll be 34 feet wide, and there's a quote-unquote "alley" in the center of the site providing access to some of the units near the center. That alley is 20 feet wide. This is an aerial view of the site that shows the project boundaries, the two existing office buildings, the existing parking areas and landscaping. You can also see a portion of the single-family neighborhood west of the site, other office buildings north and south of the site. Now, I understand that this aerial photograph is outdated because on the south side of the site, southeast side of the site, those office buildings, or at least some of them, have been replaced by a similar multi-story residential project that just doesn't, isn't reflected in the aerial photograph. Across the street from the site is the former Kmart site, now apparently occupied by Florin Decor, and at the southeast corner across, diagonally across the site is a medical office This shows the existing office buildings on the site as viewed from Cameron Avenue. The image on the top of the screen shows some existing businesses to the north of the site, and then the image on below is a rendering of the new residential project, relatively new residential project built to the south of the site. Image on top now shows some of the homes along Sawyer Avenue behind the site, and then the image at the bottom of the screen shows the Florin Decor building to the left and the medical office buildings to the right diagonally across from the project site. These are elevations that show the view of the building, the proposed building, one of the proposed buildings along Cameron. This shows the architecture, the colors to be used. There are two color schemes going to be used throughout the project site. One is sort of a warmer green and brownish shade on the top, and the other one is, uses more gray tones. The color, the image on the top shows the Cameron elevation that shows the elevated stoops. It's a little bit hard to see, but there are steps up to the front door. The other buildings behind the Cameron frontage are at grade, so there's no, there's no step-ups to the front door. The landscape plan calls for all the existing landscaping to be removed on the site, to be replaced by over 100 trees, all between 24- and 36-inch box size, including four California sycamores at the northwest and sort of southwest corners of the site, two olive trees, one near the south, the southwest corner, and the others at the northwest corner, three magnolia trees, two of them near the entrance off of Cameron Avenue, and eight Brisbane box trees along the street. There's obviously additional landscaping along the other property lines, smaller landscaping along the other property lines, and along the walkways on separating the buildings interior to the site. This slide shows some additional street front details, including the screens that will be utilized to screen the proposed air conditioning units that will be at grade near the front entrances of the buildings. So these screens will not only be metal, but they'll also have planting that will help grow up and around and hide the metal screen. The, these HVAC condensers will be near, adjacent to the front stoops of the building along Cameron, and then they'll be near the front entrances of the other buildings throughout the site. This slide represents some of the wall and fence details. There would be, there'll be a new six-foot split-face block wall along the northerly and southerly property lines. The, an existing seven-foot metal fence along the westerly property line will be, will be retained and painted black. It's a little hard to see in this image, but I hope you've had a chance to look at the plans. You can see some of the details of the walls and fencing and patio enclosure walls, the lower patio enclosure walls, and the signage along the lower edge of this slide. This shows the floor plan for the 12-unit building. In the 12-unit building, they have two floor plans, Plan Two and Plan Three. Plan Two uses tandem parking. It's three-bedroom and three-bath and 1,500 square feet. Plan Three is 1,796 square feet with side-by-side two-car garage, three-bedroom, three-bath. It includes a quote-unquote "flex room," sort of, it can be either used as a den or workspace at the ground level. And this is the first floor plan. At the second floor level, this is the main living areas with the kitchen, dining, great room or living room, bathroom on each of the floor plans. On the Plan Two and the Plan Three, there is one, I think there is one bedroom, it's a little hard to see, there's one bedroom on each of these floor plans at this second floor level. The other bedrooms are at the third floor level, and other bathrooms are at the third floor. As I mentioned, Plan Two is 1,500 square feet. It has a 497-square-foot tandem two-car garage, square, about 100 square foot, or a smaller, about a 35-square-foot front porch and entry, and then 400 square feet, cubic feet of storage at the first floor level. At the second floor, we've got the living room, dining room, kitchen, a bedroom and bathroom, and 100 square feet of outdoor deck. And then on the third floor, you have two bedrooms and bathrooms and a laundry. Plan Three is similar, 411-square-foot two-car garage with a porch entry vestibule, a flex room, and 150 cubic feet of storage. At the second story, you have a living room, dining room, kitchen, bedroom, bathroom, a office space, and then 100 square feet of deck, and then bedrooms and bathrooms and laundry room on the third floor. On the 10-unit buildings, which are found interior to the site, there's an additional floor plan, the Plan One, which is rectangular. It's 1,210 square feet. It has two bedrooms and two-and-a-half baths. On the first floor level, you just have parking and, and the entryway. On the Plan One, on the second floor level, you have the main living area, you have the kitchen, and you have a 70-square-foot outdoor deck. And then on the third floor, you have bedrooms and bathrooms and another deck. So the Plan One and Plan Two for the 10-unit buildings are identical as for the 12-unit building. The, the Plan Two and Three are identical. The Plan One is the 1,210-square-foot unit with a 404-square-foot two-car garage at the ground level, 12-square-foot porch, an entry vestibule, and 400 cubic feet of storage. The second floor, you've got the living room, dining room, kitchen, bedroom, powder room, and a 70-square-foot deck. And then on the third floor, you have two bedrooms and bathrooms, a laundry, and a 70-square-foot deck also. This is a rendering or architectural image of what the project would look like along Cameron. This is the Cameron frontage and shows the elevated front stoops. The smaller image upper-left on this slide shows the main entryway off of Cameron, the building's flanking the entryway. And then the image lower-right shows two of the interior buildings with the walkway down the middle, separating the two that provides access to each of the front, the front doors on each of the buildings. On the project site, there were identified five significant trees that will be removed, two banyan figs and three little leaf figs. These are all located basically in the parkway or along the very front, street frontage of the site. There's another significant tree, a California sycamore, that is off-site. It will not be removed as part of the project, and mitigation measures are proposed to protect, ensure that this tree is protected and not damaged by the construction activities. The project will pay the fee for art in public places, it'll pay, it'll pay development impact fees and park fees. Staff believes that this project helps address the city's needs under the Regional Housing Needs Assessment for the housing element, producing more housing in a more affordable way, and that this, this type of project with higher-density housing is, is a good location along, on a transit route and in the downtown. It also creates a reasonable transition from the single-family neighborhood west of the site by having that 50-foot separation between the property line and the new buildings. The applicant conducted neighborhood outreach meetings on April 3 and 10 via Zoom. Residents within 300 feet received a flyer, enabling them to set an appointment to discuss the project. Developer also walked the property, the neighborhood, and knocked on doors and met with some of the neighbors in that area. Legal notices were sent out. The SEQA notice was sent out, and the comment period began on May 19 and ended on June 8. And public hearing notices for tonight's meeting were sent out on May 20. The site was also posted, and the notice was published in the newspaper. An environmental document has been prepared for the project, a mitigated negative declaration. This was circulated, as I mentioned, for public comment. Comments have been received from the sanitation district and from two individuals. Christine Donahue from Rincon is the environmental consultant, who will be here tonight to provide more detail about the environmental document and that process.
Thank you, Jeff. As previously mentioned, the city prepared an initial study mitigating negative declaration for the project. It's a comprehension evaluation of the project under SEQA, supported by key technical studies. This illustrates the SEQA process. We've already talked about the public review period, and we're in the process right now, so response to comments have already been prepared for the project and provided to the Planning Commission and to the public. We're at the point right now where the Planning Commission will consider that document and make a recommendation to the city council. So the project's environmental impacts, the initial study determined that the project would have less than significant impacts with the exception of these topics, where the initial study indicated that the project would have impacts that would be less than significant if mitigation was incorporated on these subjects as follows. With respect to biological resources, we've identified mitigation for nesting bird avoidance and the tree protection measures in particular. This speaks to the one off-site tree that kind of hangs over onto the project site, so it provides for onsite protection of that tree. Fairly standard cultural resources protection measures related to workers' environmental awareness programs, onsite archaeological monitoring, and then what do we do if we've, if we find things that we didn't know were there? Archaeological resources and human remains, we have measures to address that. Geology and soils, similarly, this addresses anticipate, unanticipated discovery if paleontological resources are identified. Hazards and hazardous materials, the first measure addresses the potential for lead and asbestos associated with demolition of the existing structures, so make sure that those are taken care of, as well as some subsurface testing and soil management in the event that constituents are identified below the existing structures. Also, standard noise construction reduction measures, as well as requirements for meeting noise standards with respect to how the residences are built, the materials used, and the sound reduction achieved. Also, a transportation measure related to safety and, whoops, sorry, and traffic control, so traffic control during construction, as well as some particular measures during, to be in place prior to project operation. And last but not least, we have measures related to tribal cultural resources in the event that some resources are found during construction, how those are handled. And on utilities and service systems, basically, this addresses fair share requirements for replacement of an existing sewer line. We do have one correction that was made in the final ISM and D. It deletes some language that was in a carryover document, so that is highlighted on the next slide. It occurs in two places, on pages 118 and on pages 119, and it just did not belong in the document. And as previously mentioned, so the Planning Commission will consider the initial study mitigating negative declaration and make a recommendation to the city council as to whether that should be adopted.
Based on the review of the site and the environmental analysis prepared, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the resolutions and recommend that city council approve the precise plan, tree removal permit, tentative track map, and general plan amendment, and recommend approval or certification of the environmental document. That completes my presentation. Do you have any questions?
I also would like to add that Jana Robbins, a city engineer, traffic, city traffic engineer is also available for any traffic-related questions pertaining to the city. And I also would like to point out that staff distributed copy, hard copies, and emailed the Planning Commission a letter that was sent by Mr. Thomas Chulwick memorializing his conversation and meetings with Meritage Homes.
At this time, we'll open public hearing. First, we will be hearing from the applicant.
Right. Good evening, Chair Becerra, members of the Planning Commission. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present the project here tonight. My name is Matt Mahara. I am the project manager with Meritage Homes. What I passed out for you there is just an image of the illustrative site plan and the renderings, just so you can kind of have it handy when we start talking about the details of the project. You know, I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank staff for an extremely thorough staff report. It's not easy to bring a project to this point, and the, the level of transparency and the amount of work that, that staff put into this project. I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank them for, for all the hard work that's been worked, that's been done on this project. So as I mentioned, I work for Meritage Homes. We are the home builder that built the project directly next door called Cameron 56. It was actually the first product that was approved in, in the downtown plan when it was first adopted. The project was entitled back in 2018. It's 56 Homes, three-story townhome project, and, and it actually completely sold out. As of last, last month, it actually completely sold out. So it sold out in less than a year. It just goes to show you the, the, you know, we all know how hot this market is for real estate, but the, the level of activity, the level of interest for folks to, to live and to work and honestly, to pay sales tax in the City of West Covina. And so it was, it was really exciting to see that community sell as quickly as it did. And, you know, one thing that we learned from, from selling in this community was about a third of the homes purchased in this community were purchased by first responders, police officers, firefighters, teachers, and not only that, over half of the, of the folks who purchased here were first-time home buyers. So just, it was just kind of an indication of the type of, type of folks that are looking to, to buy in this, in this neighborhood. So here's, here's the illustrative site plan. I just want to touch on a couple things here. So in terms of the frontage, as I mentioned, this, this product is directly next to the Cameron 56 project, and for those of you who've had the opportunity to, to, to drive this area, we will be continuing the, the stairs up to, to the stoops. We'll be continuing the perimeter landscaping, as well as the trees with the metal grating. And then, and then as you, as you go into the, the project, it's, it's, the entrance is this kind of main central enhanced kind of entry with the signage on, on both sides of the, of the entry, as well as, as, as landscaped trees. And then, you know, the main thing that I wanted to point out here for this project is we have a 50-foot setback from the southern property line from any, from, from the adjacent residential neighborhood. And so when, 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 you know, when I knocked on the doors of, of the adjacent neighbors and I explained the setback, I was able to put a lot of the questions, a lot of the concerns that they had at ease because they, they saw that setback, and they're like, okay, you're, you're paying respect to my privacy. I, I, you know, I understand this project. So I just wanted to show a, a current street scene of, this is the first financial corporate center. It's one of the buildings on the site. It's a single-story building. As you can see, there's not a lot of movement in the facade. There's a pretty large setback off of West Cameron. It's a typical office park. And here's the proposed street scene, and, you know, just going from, from the street to the front doors, we have here the, next to the curb, we have the landscaping strip with trees and the metal grating, and then we have the stairs that lead up to the stoop. And as you can see here, there, there's a lot of, there's a lot of movement within the building here from, between each unit. There, there's a lot of setback between each, each unit. And, you know, with the, with the stoop secretes this really nice, smooth transition between the public and private sector, really welcoming urban, you know, that, that was the intent of the downtown plan, and, and we, we proposed a project that was consistent with the downtown And then here, here's an image of the proposed entry, just to kind of give you an idea visually of what that looks like in 3D. And as you can see here with the entry signs on, on both sides of the entry, and then, you know, what we wanted to do with this rendering also was, was show it during the evening, specifically to show with the lights turned on, you know, and, and the existing use, it's an office park. At night, it's, it's dark, the, everything's locked. It's not the most inviting place to walk around, but the downtown plan envisioned this real. It's not the most inviting place to walk around, but the downtown plan envisioned this revitalized kind of urban, walkable type neighborhood, and so we wanted to show, you know, what that would look like at night and how inviting that would look, you know, for folks to be walking down the street of West Cameron. And here's an image of the internal paseos in the kind of central looped area. There is a paseo that runs down between the townhome units. So you can see here how the private open space is utilized. So not only are we providing the private open space in the second-story decks of these units, we're also providing, we're also providing the decks on the ground floor so folks can, you know, further enjoy, they can have a picnic, a barbecue, just more private open space for folks to enjoy in this neighborhood. So in terms of neighborhood outreach, we started very similar to the project, the West Cam, oh, sorry, the Vincent project. We started outreach early 2020, and unfortunately, COVID happened, and we weren't able to meet in person, but we did hold a virtual community meeting via Zoom, and everyone within a 300-foot radius of the project was noticed, and they were sent a FAQ flyer, the site plan, and then also a QR code to, a link to schedule some time with me to learn a little bit more about the project. So here's an image, you know, I just wanted to show kind of graphically that this is the properties that were noticed in the 300-foot radius. And after meeting with some of the neighbors here and gathering the feedback, I wanted to highlight a couple of the comments that came up while meeting with them. One of them was maintaining, you know, how are you going to maintain adjacent neighbor privacy, and what's the landscaping going to be done on the southern edge of the property? So I wanted to talk about those two together. So on the site plan, we have over 111 trees proposed on this site plan. There's 14 existing trees specifically in the area that I outline and on the southern edge. There's 14 existing trees, and what we're doing is we're proposing 34 trees in the same general location. It's a mix of Tristania and Cypress trees, 24-inch and 36-inch box trees. And after working with the neighbors, concern was about the height, so what we're doing is we're providing a minimum 12-foot tall height for the trees on the southern border. And then, you know, on top of that, the 50-foot setback when showing that to the neighbors, it eased a lot of their concerns. And then the third comment was construction impacts, and this is related to the letter that was submitted in your packet from one of the adjacent neighbors. A couple of the questions that came up was, what is the, how is noise and dust being mitigated during construction? So we will be installing site, site sound blankets on-site to mitigate for the noise and dust that's generated during construction. Also, what we're doing is we're going to be, we're going to be regularly watering the site so that we're keeping the dust down during construction. That's been what we found for Cameron 56. That's been extremely useful track to, you know, make sure that we're, you know, paying respect to the adjacent neighbors. Also, another question was, can the new community HOA enforce noise complaints? And so, you know, we're going to have language in the CCNRs that require, that requires quiet hours from 10:00 PM to 8:00 AM, and the HOA has the authority to enforce those quiet hours. So in conclusion, you know, this project is 100% consistent with the downtown plan. This is an opportunity to create new attainable single-family housing. This is true workforce housing. This is FHA-qualified. FHA loan limit here is over 800,000, so all of these homes qualify for FHA, for an FHA loan, only three and a half percent down. This is workforce housing, you know, at its core. It's got an attractive variety of floor plans, wide range, it has a wide range of price points per floor plan. So, you know, for first-time home buyers, it's definitely an attractive option. We've been working with staff closely. It's been an extremely collaborative process, and we've been working with the neighbors, you know, in as much as possible during this, during this tough time during COVID. Thank you so much for your time. We have our team of consultants here, so if you have any specific questions for them, they're available to answer any questions, and I'm here as well. Thank you.
At this time, we'd like to hear for those in favor of the project, please. That are for the project? Against, okay. They'd like to come forward?
I don't really want to oppose for this project, but the projects that were done before, I live off of Sherway Street in Cameron, and we live right next door to the townhomes, and we were never told that the foundation of the townhomes was going to be, the dirt was going to be so high, and our wall, it just, the cement goes over the dirt. So when they water the plants, the water seeps over to our side. It was going down our driveway. It's a little better now, but it still seeps over, and the people that live there, we could see them from their waist up. We were never told that. I have a handicapped daughter, and we can't even walk her out because she has a lot of problems, and they just stare, and we have to keep her indoors. There are some plants there, but you still could see through. We can smell their smoke, their pot, they're always smoking pot, and that's my main complaint. We had to put a tarp, probably from maybe a little shorter than this, a white one to give us privacy. The house doesn't look very nice with the tarp, but at least it gives us privacy. So Erin had told us that no windows were going to be in our site because we have a swimming pool. She used to go swimming, now she can't go swimming. There are some big windows in our side, too. He said they were all going to be small. They're not all small. Well, the privacy, we don't have any more privacy. So I don't know about the other ones. I really don't care about the other ones, but except for the traffic, which I don't drive that much, but I'm just telling you, what they tell the people is not really what is done. So I just wanted to let you know that, how we have to live now. With people looking over, they're smoking, we could see them from their waist up, because we're at the tail end, we're right next door to them. You can hear them laughing. Oh, and then the gate was open for a while, and they used to walk, they don't have small dogs, they have big dogs, walk them, let their business out in the street right in front of our house. I don't know, I guess somebody else complained because they have the gates locked now, but their little dogs do come through, because it's a wrought iron, they come through and then they go back in. I don't know if they do their business, I don't check. So that's what I'm complaining about. So they don't tell you a lot of things. And then Joe, our neighbor, he got so frustrated because his wall is real short, he just got so sick, and he just moved out because of the same problem. He lives back-to-back, he used to live back-to-back with us. So I just wanted to let you guys know that what they say is not what they do.
Thank you for taking my comments. My name is Tom Jewick. I'm one of the property owners that will be sharing an adjacent wall. And my main concern, because I keep hearing about this 50-foot setback, is having to do with the fact that even though the new property will be setback, against my wall will be the parking and the street. So it's not like I'm 50 feet back from my new neighbors that are coming. So my concern has more not to do so much with what's going on within the unit, but whether the CCNRs are written in such a way that can keep the noise down from cars that are parked next to my wall. The wall, the adjacent wall is only 13 feet from my bedrooms, so if people are leaving units late at night and talking or listening to the radio, that would be a lot of noise for me, even though it won't affect the people in the new development. So I was told that the CCNRs have to be approved by the city, and so that was my main concern, not so much the noise from the units, but the noise on the street and the parking next to my wall. Thank you.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
Would you, would you prefer having the parking be closer to the units as opposed to along the wall, such that that's just sort of a transit corridor along the wall?
Well, that would be much better, but from an aesthetic standpoint, I'm guessing that whoever buys those units wouldn't want parking in front of their units either. So that's why I'm trying to find some sort of...
Understood.
See, I'm not against what's happening because I realize that there has to be balance between what we want and what the city needs as well, but I just want to make sure that some of these types of things are kind of mitigated. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not here. My name is Cam Poon, 101 Hudson Lane, actually, is in Cameron 56, new owner there. One of the concern is regarding the traffic situation and the speed limit on Cameron Avenue. Once we moved in, the speed limit on Cameron seems like is outrageous. People are racing at night, and we keep hearing all the noise, and all the community members actually do have a concern if there's anything, any way that we can have a three-way stop sign on Toluca and Cameron, because right now we only have the stop sign at Toluca, where it's really hard to make any turns. So that is one of the concern that we have, and also because they are building up a sec, like for us, consider a second phase, consider building a gated community, because we do have a lot of public safety issue at our community. At night, there's unwelcome visitor coming in and out, and we saw that every single night at our, on our rain cameras here. So this is one of our, another concern on the public safety side. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Can I have a pen?
Is there anyone else who is opposed? At this time, we're going to close the public hearing, and we will open, I'm sorry.
We should allow the applicant an opportunity to respond to the opposition comments for
Hi, Chair Basara and Commissioners, I'm Aaron Talarico. I was the project manager on Cameron 56. I'm a colleague of Matt's. And I just heard Carolyn speak. I spoke to her in the hall earlier before this hearing. Everything she said has validity, and I'm going to go sit down with her after this hearing and see what we can do. The units have been built, obviously, everything's in there, but what we can do to maybe mitigate some of the issues they're having there. I think, you know, post our project, they made an amendment, which was a smart amendment, and that's what has created now our new project with that 50-foot setback from single-family. When we initially came in, we had three stories within five feet. That was what you were allowed to in that initial downtown plan, until finally, you know, after talking with Carolyn and a couple other neighbors adjacent, they weren't comfortable with that height limit next to single-family. Single-family could go two stories, we were three, and so we actually voluntarily brought down to two, which did come at quite a big bit of cost because we had ended up with 14-unit buildings because it made our buildings connect. I know Commissioner Hang, you were on that planning mission when we did that. That was like a last-minute change we made. You know, at the time, we thought we were doing the right thing. I think since we were the first one, obviously, there was some, probably some mistakes, or maybe some stuff that we're doing better this time, and hopefully, we can show that. And if there's anything the commission would like us to do, just please let us know, but I will be sitting down with Carolyn and her husband to see if there's anything we can do to help them out. We talked about a few things before the hearing. Thank you. And then Matt can answer the other two questions. He's got answers for those. Thanks.
Hi, Commission. Thank you. I wanted to thank the neighbors for providing their comments, and regarding the comment about CCNRs and having cars parked on the south side, concerned with noise, the HOA can absolutely, through the language in the CCNRs, the HOA can absolutely enforce any noise complaints if there are any folks that are sitting in their car, say blasting their music. That is within the HOA's purview to ensure that that is not happening. So that's definitely within the HOA's purview. In terms of, you know, having a gated community, I think most cities actually have a general plan policy against having gated communities. I think, having read the downtown plan a few times, I don't think that's the intent of the downtown plan to kind of close people off, especially with, you know, the design of stoops and really having that kind of private-public interaction. Also, there's some traffic implications when you have to consider the loading to turn into the community. If it starts to stack up, that could be an issue for traffic. So, you know, we did, we worked with staff, we looked at the site plan to make sure that we're designing it in the way that's least impactful to traffic. There's actually two current driveways right now. We condensed it to one to make sure that, you know, there's not two different groups of people leaving in at the same time. It's one, it's one entry, and it is not gated for that very reason. So I just wanted to answer that. I'm here if you have, if you guys have any questions for me.
I have quite a few questions. With regard to, with regard to the single driveway design, I have some concerns about that, just given the density of this project. This is 84 units. Cameron 56, obviously, was 56 units. And just driving through Cameron 56, I did that again today on my way, and I was, I'm concerned about the fact there's only one way in and one way out, and I see an opportunity that I think you're missing on. The fact is, is that you have Toluca there, and honestly, I think if you have a driveway, I think that would be to the, to the east there of, I guess it would be this unit right here.
Yeah.
I think it would actually make a lot more sense in terms of connecting to Toluca and then giving people direct freeway access, as opposed to, as opposed to sort of having to go around. I think that, given what our community is, frankly, it makes a lot more sense to have a second driveway. There's also emergency reasons why I can see having two driveways may be better than one.
Sure.
Here, there's, there isn't that, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Do you mind if I... Guys given any thought to that?
Yeah, so, you know, that, thank you for mentioning that. It is something, when we were first looking at this project, we did have two entries. The concern that we received from staff and traffic is, you know, when we looked at having an entry on that side, it's so close to Toluca that you would have an offset intersection, unfortunately, so it actually creates more of an issue because then people are going to try to, if they want to try to get to because then people are going to try to, if they want to try to get to the freeway or to the City Hall, they're going to try to go out kind of and on to Toluca. So it's unfortunate where that intersection is located. The way that we have it located centrally is so that it's offset far enough from Toluca to give folks enough time to, you know, get into that left-hand turn lane if they are trying to go up to Luka. But, you know, in terms of fire, we did work with the city to make sure that, you know, that the fire department is okay with the one entry. And that is how we got there okay, that, you know, they're comfortable with the single entry and kind of the central looped road.
I mean, I think the only thing I'll say on that front is that we have sort of offset entries that are traffic lights. I mean, I'm just thinking about the exit from the 10 freeway at Sunset. There's, I believe there's an apartment complex there or something like that. And people come straight in and out with the light.
Yeah.
Honestly, I think that'd be a great option here. Quite frankly, I think it'd serve the residents of this community if it's built. Just my opinion, but I understand. With regard to some of the issues that were brought up from the perspective of the wall height?
Yes.
How tall is the wall on the backside going to be?
On the backside, we're proposing a six-foot-tall block wall.
Okay.
Along with the landscaping that I think I mentioned before.
Did you receive any comments specifically regarding the wall height? And what is the grade differential between the single-family residences and what is being proposed?
Yeah, you know, I have to confirm that. But I can bring up our civil engineer to talk about the grade differential, if that's okay. Just to...
Okay.
There's a very minor retaining situation. Mike Sutton, sorry, civil engineer at Killmore. It's about a foot and a half. So you'd be, you know, the six plus about a foot and a half difference in grade.
Okay, all right.
Higher or lower? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
Foot and a half higher or lower?
Higher.
And is there, I don't know if I should ask you this question, but is there any sort of drainage mitigation that is going on with regard to the backside of that property?
No, the water's going toward the...
The street?
Towards the street.
Okay, all right. Okay, so there wouldn't be any drainage issues there?
No.
Okay, all right. I think those are my questions for you.
I would just mention, I think that the Toluca question, I'd be concerned with the intersection spacing, if you looked at that as well. Just something to look at.
Got it.
For the, our movements, so.
Yeah.
Actually, I'm sorry. Could you come back, Mike? The foot and a half that you mentioned, is that on the south side?
Yeah, it's on the south side. Trying to remember, I think it was toward the middle, and it starts to get back to existing grade as you go to each side.
Toward the...
Towards the middle of the project was where we think it was the highest. I believe it was about a foot and a half.
Okay, but then there is some landscaping on that area, the landscaping or the size setback area. How much of a land area is that?
So it'd be a retaining situation of a foot and a half, which is really not considered retaining at all.
Right.
But it'd be taken up by the wall itself.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, I had a few more questions. With regard to that back wall, you had proposed cypress trees. And then there's, I believe, seven trees that are, it appears, based on the overhead, that they would encroach into, I guess at fully grown, they would encroach into the back neighbor's yard. Has that been something that has been discussed with those neighbors?
It hasn't been something, a concern that they brought up. But it was a concern brought up for another project, for the Vincent project. And what we can do is include language in the CCNRs that require that the trees be trimmed at the property line to make sure that that's not an issue for these. Because the last thing we want to do is try to impact them with leaves and debris.
Absolutely. And then getting at the height, there were considerations regarding the, some view considerations, I guess, that were brought up in some of the comments. In discussing the height of the trees that are put in the back area, has there been unanimity in sort of property owners' feelings about how high those should be? Or whether or not there should be, you know, sort of a cap at, let's say, seven feet or eight feet, or something like that?
Oh, in terms of the height, like...
Right, so it wouldn't impact their view or something along those lines?
I think, from the neighbors that I spoke to at least, height was preferred.
Okay.
For us, yeah, they wanted the 12-foot tall because they just didn't want to see any three-story townhomes. And I totally...
Got it. I bring it up because we've had situations. I'll bring up, on the Vincent project, there was one neighbor that didn't want a new fence. And I know you guys made some accommodation to them. And so I'm trying to figure out if that's something that is at play here, where there's one neighbor that, or two neighbors maybe potentially, that have a different viewpoint on that.
Yeah. Just our interaction right now is, the feedback that we've gotten is, yeah, they want a new wall on the property line, and they would like the trees to be 12 feet.
So, and in the back, is it, you said it's cypress trees, not porticarpus on this?
Yes, it's cypress and tristania trees, yeah. We could, but if you have a...
Only concern I have about cypress is they sometimes tend to be maintenance issues, particularly for the people behind them.
Okay.
Because they can be overgrown because unfortunately, you can't access them. And since you're building them on the, basically on the property line, it would look like, or abutting to the wall, there may be access issues for maintenance. So my concern on that front would be, you know, that there would be some sort of a setback there on that front. I don't know.
I do have my landscape architect here. I don't know, would you want to hear, like...
I, I mean, I'm open...
Okay, okay. We have our whole team here.
Anything on that front.
Actually, before you go, I do have a really basic question.
Of course.
Regarding this particular project.
Of course.
What is the setback? For example, on the north on Cameron?
Yes.
What is the setback for that area? Because the plan that we received are so tiny. Could barely read some of the numbers in there, if any.
I can work it through.
So, yeah, and then also on the size setback, which is next to Cameron 56? And also on the other, and then the back setback?
We'll go around, yeah, clockwise. Okay, so along West Cameron here, we have, it varies because the homes are kind of offset. So we have a minimum five-foot setback. It's kind of the vision of the downtown plan, to have it as close to the sidewalk as possible so that, you know, there's that public-private. So it's a minimum five feet, max seven feet. And then on the side for the West Cameron, there's a, it varies. So there's 20 feet for the top right corner. And then it goes to 10 and a half, seven and a half, and it stays at seven and a half on that side.
Which size is that?
On the Cameron 56 side.
Okay.
And then on the south side, there's that 50-foot setback that we mentioned. And then the same type of condition on the west side as it is on Cameron, same type of setback. With the transition from, it's about seven and a half to 10 and a half, and then it goes to 10 in that northwest corner. So, yeah, that's, hopefully that answers everything.
I see. Thank you. Because traditionally, you know, the front, the houses here, and even in 57, Cameron 57 as well, traditionally, the size setback is a little bit, you know, it's more. Obviously, this is commercial. And right next to Cameron 56, I mean, between seven feet and then the other side is also seven feet. So you're looking at 14 feet, basically, in between buildings.
Yeah, so as of right now, the way the downtown plan has it, actually, the current condition, if you go there right now, there's a building that's on the property line. So it's a zero-foot setback between residential and the next building. So there, you know, for us, we're trying to provide as much space as possible to get a landscaping strip in there, to provide trees so that we are kind of maintaining folks' privacy. But the current condition right now is a lot worse in that there's a zero-foot setback. So what we're trying to do is back off of that.
But it's commercial, I understand that. Because as a Pacific plan zoning for this particular area, and considering that this is a residential project, we also do need to, you know, to take a look at all those setback issues as well.
I agree, yeah.
One other thing, as you mentioned, that there is 50 feet setback from the back side.
Yes.
And the neighbor setback, it looks pretty close. The neighbors' property lines to their home, they're about five feet?
No, no, no. It varies, but it's...
Can't tell, but...
I believe it's around 12 feet is kind of the minimum setback from the neighbor's house to the PL, for their PL, and then another 50 feet on top of that.
Okay, so from their property line to, from the property line to the building, is that the 50 feet you're talking about?
Yes, it's from the property line. So from building to building, it's really like 60-plus type.
Okay, so because the neighbor has about 12 feet or so?
Exactly, exactly.
It would take the 50 feet that you have.
Right. And it varies, so, you know, yeah.
Okay, all righty. Another question that I have was regarding the gate. This is the second or the third time that we go through this. Any particular reason? I'm just trying to understand, why is it the resistant? Because we do have project. And then considering that this is, you know, 10, 15 years ago, that we do have projects that is gated within our city. However, in today's time, with a lot of homeless and transit issues, any particular reason why you're resistant? I'm just trying to understand why, from project to project, it seems like, you know, a community with gated is not provided. I just wonder why. And then especially when we're hearing from the next-door communities that they're saying that are having issues. I mean, before we even approved the project, some of the issues has been, you know, raised, and we thought that this may be a problem because it is a downtown area.
Yeah, you know...
And the homeless issue has just multiplying. And any particular reason why you wouldn't put a gate?
Yeah, no, so, you know, for us, it's, we want to be consistent with the downtown plan. We don't want to propose something that is going to contradict that plan. And in the downtown plan, it's very, you know, they want people to access the site. They want to be able to see front doors. And for us...
We're still seeing the front door. I'm not saying we're not seeing the front door. It's just that, it's concerning that you can put a gate in there, and if there's no activity or no issues with the homeless, they can easily open it.
So with, it's also a fire issue. So when a fire truck is trying to get into a gated community, now you have to provide a very significant turnaround. We want to make sure that that's correct. It takes up a lot of space in order to provide a turnaround. And also, and also there's, we want to prevent stacking for cars. So then not only are we providing that turnaround, but also, you know, we're also providing another area, another lane, basically, for folks to stack before they get into the community because we don't want to cause a traffic issue. So there's a lot of design implications with providing a gated community beyond just, you know, let's just try to block off our communities here. And, you know, that really wasn't the direction that we were pushed by staff and...
So basically, the fire truck, when they go in there, they can't just drive around and so go and get back out. They want to turn around somewhere.
Exactly. So we would have to carve that design into the community. And, you know, for us, it would be, it would be a huge design implication for us to look at that option.
Thank you.
With regard to the concern, one of the residents had for traffic. Since this is quickly becoming more residential now than commercial, Cameron is a major avenue to get to the 10 freeway eastbound, westbound, either down Garvey or to turn right on Pacific and, you know, catch the freeway there. Would they, you know, we'd be, you know, the speed limit right now is 40? What is the speed limit on Cameron? So maybe to adjust that, maybe to a 35 or something? Also, it would help the residents, when they are leaving, to possibly get on the freeway to make a left-hand turn because people usually go pretty fast, especially if they're running late for work down that street.
Yeah, and, you know, I completely agree with you 100%. The traffic on West Cameron is, it is intense. So, you know, we had our sequel consultant kind of investigate that, see what options they would suggest for that. They actually investigated, you know, whether an intersection was necessary. There was an intersection analysis done. Because of the location of the next intersection, they determined that that wasn't something that they wanted to do. I imagine it's because of, you know, cars backing up and creating more of a traffic issue. But if there's a design solution that the Commission feels is suitable for that intersection, for Toluca, we're, you know, we'd like to, you know, work with staff and try to come up with something that makes everyone, you know, a little bit more comfortable about the traffic intersection there.
Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
So entry and exiting from Cameron Avenue, are you willing to put a stripping on the ground right there with a stop sign? And just that intersection area, some lines right here to tell, to give cars the knowledgeability to be on the right side and the left side difference?
Absolutely, 100%. Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
And is, and also, I think, so everyone can see, so I think putting lines in between here with a stop sign here and possibly a stop sign on this corner and this corner just to let, so cars could stop. And so in case of an emergency, there's caution taken. So cars are not just all running out exiting.
Yeah, and I totally, I understand what you're saying. And for us, if you could, if it could be a condition that says that we'll work with staff to figure out if, you know, where the appropriate location of those stop signs would be, and making sure that we're providing enough and thinking about how that impacts the entrance there. That's the only thing I'd ask, is just let us work with staff. Because at this stage, it's very schematic. We obviously, we don't have any stop signs shown because we have to figure it out with the city during final engineering. But that is something that we'll be working out as we go through this process.
And then the lights, the lighting looks beautiful. But if those homeowners decide to turn off their lights and save energy, what lights remain in the front?
Are you talking about streetlights or...
Well, yeah, so on the front drawing, there's a lot of lighting.
Okay.
Which is beautiful. But if the residents were saving energy and decided to turn off their front porch lights, is there lighting that your project's going to add to this sidewalk area?
So what we can do is we can add pathway lighting. So when, you know, if people are going to bed and everything, it's still... In addition to the streetlights that are going to be on there, we can also add pathway lighting as you're walking along West Cameron.
Great.
Yeah.
And then in regards, and then, so what's going in the back, where the back of the property, next to the houses back there? Is it going to be a brick wall?
It's a CMU block wall split face with a cap on top of it.
So if I was the neighbor back there, what would I see? How tall is that block wall?
I believe it's six feet. Yeah, I'd have to confirm that, but yeah, I believe...
So in order to eliminate the past issue, what probably you want to... So in order to eliminate the past issue, we'll probably wanna somehow get, get that wall higher or something, because we don't want the same issue to happen at the other property town again. And I think it's important to create a privacy barrier between that, the new property and the prior, the current residents on other side. And then, my final question is, is there any Cal Green electric vehicle stations going in here?
Yes, this, this project will be 100% consistent with, so I, I think the same conversation that we had for the Vincent project, this, this would be consistent with Cal Green, and there would be EV charging stations, EV capable in each garage.
Great. And, and kind of like the prior project, will you be willing to put no parking signs in front of people's, in, in the, in the public area, so the, the garage spaces are out, to ensure there's no overcrowding of parking going on in those streets?
I think that's a great idea. Yeah. Yes, absolutely.
Great.
Can I interject real quick, Commissioner Gutierrez? This is what the block, uh, the back wall looks like now.
Okay. Can you zoom in?
That's as close as I can get.
Okay, I'm lying. Okay, I see.
There's a screen.
Okay. So, so I do see that you're proposing a seven, seven-feet-high existing metal fence to be painted black. If, is that, is, is there, is there an option to make that a brick wall, seven feet high?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Great. Those are my questions.
Actually, hold, hold on for one second. So that particular wall right there, because some area is block wall, some areas wouldn't, wouldn't fence, it seems like. So you're, you're planning to make another wall, right? How many feet away from the existing block wall?
So...
Existing wall? Is that, is that a wall, or is that wrought iron?
That's ugly.
Wrought iron.
Sorry. I, I think we can eliminate some confusion here. We have our, our landscape architect who prepared the, the wall and fence plan. He can come in and, and help us provide some clarity here for the...
I'm just trying to see how you're planning to put parking on that area with residential, practically the bedrooms, and what type of wall you're planning to put. I just assume it was a block wall. Like I said again, this particular plan, you're having 84 units, but you're making it 12 by 17 size. The details in there, I don't, I'm not even sure if any of the commissioners can read any of the numbers. So hopefully, just for future preference, if you could please, you know, get a bigger size, at least we, it's legible that we can actually...
Absolutely.
Not this one. It's the one that you submitted. It's this one, though. It's the same size? Looks about the same size?
Yeah, I, I think so. I, I also, I 100% agree with you. I, I also did email you the, the plans ahead of time, where, where you, you know, and, and it can be zoomed in as much. But I, I do understand, it is, there's a lot of detail.
We'd like to try to read the latest ones, because sometime we don't know what got adjusted and changed, and as I was looking at it, I was like, my gosh, I could barely...
I agree. I, I agree. There's a lot of detail here.
I have pretty good eyesight for now, so...
No, 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 I, I got you. I got you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, if I could just interject briefly. I think what you'll see in the, in the image up on the screen shows a seven-foot metal wrought iron metal fence that exists on the site right now, ordering the, the residences to the west. Right adjacent to that is what appears to be a block wall, probably built by the residential subdivision whenever it was constructed. And that configuration appears to continue all along that westerly property line. A combination of a seven-foot metal fence and, and a six-foot probably block wall. What the applicant is proposing to do is keep both, you know, not touch the block wall, and he's gonna, he's proposing to paint that existing metal fence. There is no new block wall proposed along that property line. Just that metal fence that will remain, but be painted.
So how tall is the block wall? It seems like the iron fence is, is taller.
It is taller.
Yeah.
How much taller?
Well, in the image, it appears in some places it might be a foot and a half taller. In other, we've heard from the civil that there's some grade differentiation, differential. So in some places, it may be a, a foot, you know, difference. I, I can't be precise based on this Google image.
So if, if you, if I were to stand on this side of the property, when I park my car right there, I can actually look through the block, I mean...
You can...
I can actually look through the neighbor's yard, room?
Today, you could, but you won't be able to once the project is built, because there'll be a combination of the, the fence plus the cypress trees that will be an effective screen, plus the tristania trees.
What fence are you talking about? I thought you just...
Not fence, that, there'll be the cypress trees that will be an effective screen, because they'll be planted close together, and they're, they're columnar. And so, in, in effect, you will not be able to, to look from your parked car into the neighbor's house. And in addition, you can see, based on this view, that the neighboring properties, I mean, right here, are lower than the project site. So even if you're looking over the fence, you're looking at the roof in the, for the most part. You're not looking into neighboring windows, for the most part.
So the block, the block wall is on the neighbor's parcel, or this property's parcel?
The neighbor's.
The civil would have to confirm that, but I would be willing to bet it was built as part of that residential development, and it's on that property, those properties. But the wrought iron is probably on this project site.
If, if it becomes an issue, we can, we can construct a, a brand-new wall at that, at that location to avoid any confusion.
Yeah, how, how would that work? When you have, so is it possible to, will you have to get the neighbor's permission or something to knock down that wall, or...
Exactly. So I, I can't, I can't promise 100%, which is why we, we wanted to keep it in place. It looks like there's a good amount of height, especially when you add the L.
I think that'll be a little more complicated.
The existing wrought iron fencing that's there right now is in reasonably good shape, correct? And you're gonna paint it black?
Yeah, that's why we intended to...
Had your landscaper considered putting shrubs as a post to trees against that area? Because it does two things. It will be dense, and it also helps to reduce noise. So for example, like Italian cypress that grow quickly and provide a thick. And if you have a certain amount of landscaped area immediately where that wrought iron fencing is, that may serve two purposes. It'll one, allow you to continue to keep the wrought iron fencing there, but a dense shrub would reduce sounds, as well as provide a solid, not leaving an area open for people to see on either side.
I agree with you. I, if that's something that the commission wants, that we can, we can absolutely look at, at, at planting a dense shrub.
But that whole sections of, that whole section of the driveway, 50 feet away or so...
Yeah.
Is gonna be a three-story building. So all the bedrooms on that side of this, that side of the driveway would have someone living 50, how many feet would that be? 20 on top, 20, 25 feet when they stand on top of, of the windows? So they can actually, with a cypress, i- if it's grown, then you may not be able to look through and see the neighbor's rooftop, or...
It's one of the reasons why we, why we got to that height.
Which is the hedges.
So, yeah, but we're open to the commission, whatever you, whatever you prefer. But our, our goal is to maintain the, the privacy there, so if, if there's a suggestion, we can absolutely make that happen.
You had mentioned that the cypress is gonna be 12 feet tall when it's planted, so it's gonna be, it's pretty, a good size.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's double the height, you know, of, of, of the wall.
Okay. So it, it can act ultimately, at the end of the day, can act like a hedges, but it probably take a couple of years?
It, it's gonna be installed at 12 feet. So that, that's, you know, it's already...
But how, how dense is...
Um, I'd have to confirm that, the density on that. All right, we're gonna have our landscape architect just talk about...
I'm just trying to see if we're having hedges. Ultimately, the cypress can be a hedges, but it's 12 feet tall.
Got it.
Versus hedges that you were, Commissioner Williams was talking about.
Hi, good evening, Commissioners. Peter Duarte here with Studio Pad Landscape Architects. So just along that south, we, we typically, when we have parallel parking, we'll, we'll do this combination of the cypress with canopy trees. So we get a combination of screening, but then also some shade for parking. So this is something we do very, very often, and we have probably about six-foot of landscape between that fence and the curb. So we'll have cypress and shrubs, and we'll probably have vines in the future construction document phase, when we get to that level of detail. So we'll have vines growing on that fence as well, to kind of help just with the visual, the screening and whatnot. So the cypress is grouped, grouped to three, so you can kind of maintain it initially. And then as they grow with the, the tristanias, the two kind of, you know, get maintained to work together. So you can get the combination of vertical cypress, which grow two to three feet a year, once they're established. So if they go in at 12, within two years, you're, you're looking at like 16, 17 feet and so on. And the tristanias also grow pretty vertical, but they give you the option to get the canopies a little further, so you get some, some shade over the parked cars. And they're both evergreen.
I, I, I had a, sort of a, a larger overarching question that, that I have a great deal of concern about, and that's the fact that you only have 15 guest parking spaces. For 84 units, I have to say, I'm, I'm a little bit more than concerned, particularly given the fact that Cameron Avenue does not allow on-street parking there. And so what I'm trying to figure out is, I, I, and I looked over at Cameron 56, and based upon my rough estimation, there's far more than 15 guest parking spaces there. And that's 56 units, this is 84, and we're talking about significantly less. I mean, I, I counted probably about 30 different spaces over at Cameron 56. And, and so I, I'm trying to figure out if this whole corridor ends up being developed like this. We're sort of creating a, a, a major problem down the line, that we're sort of, we would be developing ourselves into with no way out. And I'm, I'm, I'm reticent about the project because of that. I mean, 15 spaces is just, it's not a lot. And ultimately, if everyone's gonna go off-site, you know, to have a birthday party, or, you know, have a get-together, I mean, that's just one person. If, if one person comes over for 15 units, you're capped out, and there's nowhere to park, anywhere near that. I mean, so I'm, I'm, I'm concerned, and I, and I'm trying to figure out, have, have you considered that concern? And is there, i- is there a way of, of finding additional parking here?
And, and thank you for that comment. I, I, I do understand parking is tight here. It is, you know, in, in terms of the, I just wanted to kind of give you a backstory of how we got to this point. For, for this project, the downtown plan actually has a, a zero guest parking requirement. The, the intent is that folks would be, they're, they're parking their two cars in the garage, and they're gonna be taking the bus. There's, there's, there's four major bus lines in this area. There's, there's, you know, and so that, that was the idea, is that, that folks are gonna be, you know, Ubering and, 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 and walking to the mall, and, and that's, that's, that's kind of the, the overarching idea of the downtown plan. So that's, that's why there, there's a, a zero guest parking requirement. For West Cameron, it, it kind of worked out the way that the site is designed, because it's just kind of one major driveway, and so they're, they're able to provide parallel on just that one kind of main driveway. I believe there's about 15 or so spots there. But I, I do understand that parking is tight. You know, what I can't say is, you know, for the, for the HOA, you know, we're gonna have the same requirements that we talked about for, for the Vincent project, in terms of, of making sure that there's a, you know, a, a program in place, a permit program, to make sure that, that not everyone is just parking here, that, that they're able to register for that. If they're, if they are planning to have a guest over for, for a birthday party, or whatever, that folks are able to reserve spots ahead of time, for a specific amount of time, and, and so that the HOA will, would be maintaining that. That's the current design here. But I, I do understand the concern about, you know, the, the, the parking and how, how tight it is here.
I mean, I, I'm just looking at what I saw over at Cameron 56, and nearly all of those spaces were full when, when I got there. And I mean, I went there right before I came here. So, you know, you're, 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 you're gonna have to do something about that, because quite honestly, I, I just don't see how you add effectively 30 more units, and you're, you're, you're looking at a parking situation that would clearly be overrun next door.
I completely agree. And, and, you know, we, we have looked at this, I want you to know, we have looked at, at opportunities to increase parking on this site. We threw together, it was kind of a last-minute thing, but we threw together a couple design options. I'd like to pass them out to you and, and show you what, what we were thinking as an option, potentially, to, to increase the amount of, of parking here.
Add that into your questions. What about open space?
And, and it kind of relates, the, the solution here kind of is, is related to this. If we could just pass this out and...
I'm just concerned, because nowadays, everyone loves their pets and having their dogs. They need to go somewhere to do their business. Cameron 56 is pretty tight, and I'm not sure where else that they can go.
I mean, it's, it's tough getting in and out of Cameron 56. I mean, I, like I said, I, I, I just did it, and I saw so many people parking in the, in the guest parking. It was, it was, it was surprising, and...
Yeah.
It brought me a great deal of concern.
So we, we put together a couple options to, to try to address, because we, we are aware, parking is, is tight on the site. We put together a couple options here. I can pass this around to staff as well. In, in, so in, in both options, we are, we would lose two units. So this would be an 82-unit project. And, and in that case, we could, we could offer an, an additional five parking spaces on top of the provided 15. Or option B, in, in, in option A, that would include an additional 3,300 square foot area for, for a tot lot, and, you know, and option B is, is seven parking spaces, which gets you to over, you know, 0.27 guest parking stalls per unit.
Can it be an 80-unit option to get both ideas in place?
At, at this point, I mean, this is what we're, what we're, you know, looking at, and we wanted to get the commission's feedback on this and see if, if this is something that, that would help.
Just, just curious on the...
Sure.
On the option, on the option B that you presented here...
Yeah.
What is, what is the intention of this, of this civil portion?
So that, that would be the driveway for that unit. It would be, it would not be, yeah, it, only that unit could park there.
Okay.
And it's, it's two additional spaces that were, that would be added.
Where would option B located in this?
Oh, sorry, yes. So, so this, this, both of these options are located in the southern right corner, adjacent to Cameron 56 on that edge.
I think it's right here.
Yeah, if that helps.
But is that the open space exist, existing open space right there?
It's converting that kind of loop, that curved driveway into, you know, a, a smaller area for, for parking stalls and, and/or rec space.
So you're replacing the open space for the parking space?
And losing two units. So that everything is, everything is moving up.
The one, which two? The one right at the corner?
On the, on the building on the east side, that one. It's a 10plex right now. We'd be losing two of them to get to an eightplex.
So it would be this one, this one, with this one and this one?
Just, just two, so that there, there's two units in the, the little, yeah, the, right where your fingers are, those are two units right there.
So you're losing these?
So we'd be losing those two in, in option A. And then in option B, we're, we're losing two units, but they're internal units. Either way, it's, it, no, sorry, internal in the building there. You see the, the, the tandem, one of those, one of those two units inside that building? We'd be...
Oh, right here.
Exactly. One of the pairs. Yeah. So, so what we'd be doing is growing the amount of, of opens, it's either open space or, or parking, or combination of, you know, we're, we're trying to...
What, what are the dimensions for that, that, I guess, tot lot? What would the dimensions on that be?
Depth and, and length? I have to confirm that. Sorry, we're just pulling that up. Honestly, we just kind of threw this together at the last minute, just to see. We're, we'll confirm it.
Understood.
I, I can't tell you that the, each stall is nine feet wide, so if that helps, you know, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven... two, three, four, five, six, seven, so 63, about 70 deep.
I guess I'm not getting this. Regarding the open space, are you replacing the open space for parking with also the addition of the two unit, but which only one of the unit is for parking? Is that what I'm seeing?
So we're replacing it, but then also growing it, the open space. So we're, by losing the two units, that building shrinks, and then we're able to provide some more parking stalls for option A, and then it also makes that open space area deeper as well. So that gets us...
But the open space, to some extent, is going to be gone because you're replacing with the parking?
Only in option B, in option B, we're filling the whole space in with parking. So we're not adding any open space for option B. But option A is, it really just depends on what the commission, if they have a preference, if it's more parking or if it's a combination thereof, we're just trying to give a couple options.
Is that actually open space? Because it looks like the existing proposal is just mainly driveway. Is that fair?
The existing, the existing design has, it's about 1,800 square feet. It's got a bench with a doggy bag station, and some sight lighting and a trash can. Just a nice area for folks to walk their dog in both of those corners. It's about 1,800-ish in each corner. So what we're saying is, hey, we can, we can double the amount of open space and add five parking spaces for option A, or fill it in with parking and try to find a solution there.
So on the corners, commissioners, under the green tree, that's where the open space is currently, correct? It's a little bit difficult to see on the site plan, but that's where the open space would be.
So for 84 units, how much of a space do we have for the little open space? 1,800?
As designed, it's 36, yeah, it's around 3,600 square feet. I'd have to confirm the exact number, but...
So it's like a one-unit spot? One, basically a one space of a unit for the?
That's correct, just in those corners. But then we also have the paseos, you know, between the townhome buildings in, you know, and so, but in those specific corners, that's correct. It's about, it's about that square footage.
Wow, it's pretty tight. You have to have a driveway there because you have this model. These other ones don't require a driveway, correct?
That is correct.
So why not put a different model there so you don't have to have a driveway, then you can have more spaces?
Yeah, I mean, we kind of threw this together at last minute, but we couldn't, we couldn't fit a unit there instead of, instead of the two, because of the width of the units. It's a little hard to describe, but it's, we weren't able to switch it out for another...
It looks like these are wider than the other ones.
It works as a pair. So the tandem unit is paired with the side-by-side unit. So in order for it to be apples-to-apples, to be at 62 units, the width of the pair isn't this, is deeper than the twin units, if that helps, if that makes any sense.
I like the fact that you max out every inch of this particular property, but also at the expense of parking, at the expense of some open space. And I really do like to see that, and then sporadically even parking is really toward the southern side. It's not spaced out throughout the whole area. So toward the front area, you don't have any parking, so all the guests kind of have to push toward the back area to be parked.
I agree.
With a very limited space of 15, and I'm...
We wanted to make the best use of that 50-foot setback, and for us, it worked out that that was the best spot for parking. I do understand the concern about having concentrated...
Well, that's what's the only 15 that we're talking about. We're just looking to see if there's any places that you can sporadically put more parking spaces throughout the project.
Yeah, so with this proposed, with this proposed, you know, for option B, for example, this is parked at .27 guest parking stalls per unit. That's above and beyond what the city requirement would be for any site in West Covina. So that ratio for 22 stalls for 82 homes, that ratio is, you know, above what the city requirement would be in any area, regardless of whether it's in the downtown plan. The usual requirement is .25, if that makes sense.
So if you were to, let's just say, go down to 80 units, will you be able to fit both designs in the project?
We would have to investigate that. If, you know, for us, it's just, it's just reducing the number of homes. It's reducing the number of folks that can live and work in the city. You know, it's, it would be a significant hit to the viability of this project.
It'll be two less than what you're proposing.
Yes, and these two is already, you know, we're trying to work with the concerns that we're hearing. We do understand that parking is a concern here, so that's why we wanted to kind of come up with two different options here.
At the end of the day, I do like the project. However, I am really concerned with some of the, how it's really compacted to a point that some of the issues raise, like some of the doggy stations that needs to be, it seems like everyone wants a dog nowadays, or pet somewhere. Where are they going? If they're not going to your spacing, they're going to go to the neighbor's spacing somehow along the way. But I'm just saying that it's just really tight, and it's a beautiful project, but it's really hard for me to support everything that you want. That's just my take on it. You might want, and you can work it out so that we can have more parking space or some of the, you know, space it out somehow so that they can have some of the open spaces throughout the community. And you already have, your own existing community had concern, which we're not even addressing in this issues, I'm sorry, on this project. It's basically the transit people that are there, and that's a concern too. When you're building projects that is using the resources that we barely have in the city of West Covina, that's really a concern. You know, the police and all that, when the problem exists, when you can actually look into it and close it, maybe figure out how you can perhaps either gated and get a little bit more parking space from, I'm not sure, but it's something that you can, you know...
Yeah, I do understand the concern. I think there's some conflicting things here, so, you know, in terms of...
I understand that you want maximum units. I get that, and I'm more than willing to support this project. At the same time, we also have to look at the existing residents that lives here, also, you know, for the general public as well, and then whether this, how much is it going to impact this whole area? So that is, you know...
Yeah, and I do understand that. So there's two things here. So for a gated community, this would be less units. It would, it would impact the yield in this site even further, you know, and then also the traffic concerns, the, you know, the fire concerns. There are some major design implications with that. What we're trying to do here with the, with this proposal, with the option A and B, is trying to find areas where we can, you know, add as many parking stalls as possible, and but also provide a balance between parking and open space. We're willing to work with you guys if, you know, if, if, if this amount of parking isn't adequate, we're willing to work with you as well on this.
Chair Becerra and commissioners, perhaps at this time, if there are no further questions for the applicant, it would be appropriate for you to have some discussion as a body about what you want to do with this project.
Okay, then we will go ahead and close the public hearing, and we will open this up for discussion amongst the commissioners.
I think, I think it's a great project, and I think, some of you may have stated that I think it's important that we somehow integrate green space and additional parking, additional parking, so...
It's just that we're in Southern California, and yes, we are in the downtown area, and in this particular project, we do want to invite people to walk and what have you. But at the same time, we'll also have to look at the reality of living in Southern California. Everyone loves their car. And when that happened, this community needs to be self, basically being able to self-sustain and not disturbing too much of the surrounding area. And I'm not even sure where exactly it's going to go. Walk across, parking K-mark to park? I don't know. I mean, the street is just, I had no idea, so. I think it's better if we plan it properly at the beginning and have a better plan, better parking space, some open space, and I'm sure the developer can come up with some area that they can work it out. I get it, every inch is max out. This is a three-story building. Some area is only nine, I can't read it, it's nine foot or so for the tenant garage. I mean, that is a pretty, is a pretty tight unit. So reducing a couple of units and being able to build the whole project and accommodate some of the commissioners' comments is just not, it's basically, it's beneficial to the public and also to the resident West Covina.
Maybe, maybe, maybe they need, maybe, maybe we could bring this back at the next meeting, so you guys have more time to draw, or? Chair, I don't mind.
Don't we want to finish commission discussion before you reopen? One of the things which I think was a good point, we understand that this is in the downtown area, but physically right now, what you have is a large commercial building for floor and decor. It's actually the back of that building. When it comes to design, you want people to feel safe, and they call it eyes on the street. This particular location doesn't really have that right now, and that may be part of the concern raised by the people who are in the 56-unit development. We, you know, we have to look at the realities of that particular location and how else to make people feel safe. It was even a good question about lighting along that area as well. There are ways that it could easily incorporate a gate. Yes, it would mean having to remove units. But at the same time, I don't know that the situation that's going on with the property to the other side, if that could not have benefited them. So maybe it is something that does need to be considered.
I think that if you were to do that, and if the property next door already does not have it, it just is not going to look uniform, and it may look a little awkward. I mean, I agree with the safety. If I was to live there, I would want a gate. I think with the current construction next door, it just will not flow.
But I am aware of another location in a different community, where originally, when those townhouses were developed, and they were actually off of Azusa and Covina Boulevard, they did not have a gate. But as that section of Azusa became more busy, they came to the city and said, "We need to have a gate to restrict," because they did not any longer feel safe. And as it is right now, even the way that this is done, that's similar to the way that particular development was done. And they were able to incorporate a gate after, you know, whatever that they had...
And I do know that based upon my walking in that area back a couple of months ago, that a lot of those residents back there had major concerns that their, that wall was built so low in that back area. That was another concern addressed, I know, when I spoke to residents in that area. But is it...
I'm sorry, I'd like to also add, regarding the safety of the gate, perhaps maybe the developer had mentioned that really it was a turnaround. And the turnaround, you need 37 feet or so, so the truck, okay, don't quote me, I don't know, but it's about 37 or 40 feet or so that they have to be able to turn around. It has to have a T certain way so that the big truck, fire truck in particular, to be able to go in and turn it certain way and to get themselves out of there. So basically, they probably potentially have to lose a couple of units, I'm not sure how many they probably know, in orders to accommodate that gated, the gate here. I'm not sure why the fire truck can't, once they come in, they just can't drive in circle and get out. I'm not sure why. But that's up to the fire department. So if that's something that they can work on, and it's just a huge concern, it's just that our city, every day, and if we're not looking into the fact that, you know, the homeless and the transit people and all that, it's creating a problem. Do I have a solution to solve it? No. But in this development, at least 84 or 80 units can feel safe when it's gated and they're not, you know, jumping the fence to get in.
And I, and I think the applicant has some comments to state. If the commission's fine with it, is the applicant allowed to come back and state his, whatever comment he wants to state?
Chair Becerra, you were, it's within your discretion to reopen the public hearing to allow the applicant to...
Does the applicant have?
Commissioners, Aaron, again, I think all understandable concerns, I think the three things is parking, it's open space, and it's the gate, all which, just being involved with the downtown plan from 2017, at least I was, I was adopted in 16, those were literally the three, if there was three major things in the downtown plan that were like not wanted, it would be, the last thing they would want would be a bunch of gated residential communities along Cameron. That'd be like the last thing. In terms of open space, there's, there's literally, there's zero required open space for public. We're, well, we're trying, and then for parking, there's zero guest parking spots required in the current code. Adding a gate, just talking, just briefly, you can hear us whispering back there, and I apologize, because it does have really big implications for the amount of investment we've made here to bring this project. We're here in minimum eight units at the entry to create that, the proper fire to go with West Covina standards right now. In addition to the, let's say, two units that we showed, if we took another two units on the other side, and it's 12 units, we're already back to, maybe we should just come in with a one hun, you know, no general plan amendment, and then it's really a by right. I don't want to do that, because I think we've created a beautiful project that's going to, that's going to really make a difference in the town. And I think, I think it's testament that in Cameron 56, we had one, one person come up, but it wasn't like everyone came up and said, "Hey, Cameron 56 is the worst community ever." And the one neighbor, honestly, that was, I think there was a misunderstanding, a drop of the communication, "I will talk to her and figure out a solution." And also, staff did, and the commission did a fantastic job of amending the downtown plan so that would not happen again. And I would just highly, I hope the commission can understand that those three things were really the three main things that, that were not meant to be. But maybe you guys, you guys are the commission now, maybe that's something we want to change now, and I also understand that.
I think we could get over the gate problem. I think it's more about the green space and the parking.
Yes.
Aaron, I also like to make a correction, so, I mean, don't take it the wrong way. We love your project. It's not that we don't. But in terms of saying it by rights, being able to build in West Covina is a privilege. And it's not by rights, because what we're doing right now is, we're doing a precise plan, which is we completely changing to fit your development. Some of the areas are like the size setbacks and the heights, and some of the items that we have here, we're willing to work with you. I'm just saying, you pack it so tight. And like I said, I love the project. It's beautiful and all. However, there are some issues that after you finish and after you're gone, this is what the city is going to be left with. A beautiful house, but we have issues. going to be left with, a beautiful house, but we have issues. So we like to address some of these issues ahead of time, so that when you're finished and gone, after a year or so, or two years or so after you finish selling the product or the home, we like the residents to be able to have, instead of calling the police every day regarding homeless issues or some other issues or fighting over parking or what have you, I don't know, but it seems like you're, you have a current resident that's living here, and it's telling us that there is a problem, or some, not all, but I'm just saying.
The homeless problem's not going to go away anytime soon, and I think every resident in West Covina is dealing with that right now, and that's a whole nother issue. But I agree with Commissioner Lewis, it's a great project, just want to see maybe a few more spaces and some green area, and you have a great project.
Is it, thank you, Commissioner Wang, I totally, I, I understand, and I appreciate it, and in terms, if, are you guys looking for both sides to be similar to that exhibit, to go to 80?
That, that would be, I mean, to have a green space like this and parking would be beautiful, but.
Because if we get away from the gate, that's the one that for me is just such a, a non-starter.
I think we could get over the gate, because obviously the, the property next year doesn't, wouldn't match, but I think the, the bigger issues, yeah, if, if somehow, if it was a miracle to make both these pictures possible or somehow, or something to that sort, and if you need more time to take your time in doing that drawing, then it'll be, that would be remarkable.
If we, if. Well, then I, I mean, if, that, that to us is a lot more palpable than redesigning the whole entry, so if there is a consensus among the Planning Commission on both sides, and then we drop the four units and mirror that work with staff as to what they, well, do you want the more parking, I think it's actually nine spaces, because that one unit will get two guest spaces in their driveway as well, or do you want the tot lot with the five spaces, or do you want maybe a mix or match on each, each side? If we could get to those details, and then we go down to the 80s.
Maybe option A, maybe on both corners, would that work?
Just don't have option A in front of me, hold on one. Yeah, yeah, that would create two nice, fairly decent-sized open spaces, much, much bigger than what we did at Cameron 56, and then that would get us, that would bring us well over the .25, or 2.25 per unit, which is, would be to, to code for the regular city of West Covina, but would, would exceed the downtown plan code, would that be okay?
Would that be a total of six, 26?
What's that?
How many parking spots, guest spots, would that be total?
I think it would depend on which plan you went with.
If we went with option A on both sides, I think it's 26.
26, correct?
Option, 26, what, like, is it, 25?
Yes.
25.
25, and then the other one would be 29, right?
Sorry, it.
So, so 26 for option A, and then 20 for?
They wouldn't have any green area with option B.
Yeah, 26 for option A.
25 for option A, because it's five on each si, each side.
It would still keep green area on both sides with the additional parking. Option A.
Oh, okay, yeah, sorry, it's, right, it's, it is 10, 10 additional, because we already had one there, even though you count six there.
So what's, so what are the totals for each?
25.
So we just gained 10 more space.
Yeah, you'd gain 10 more spaces with option A.
And we kept the green areas.
And you get, actually, you dealt you probably more than, I bet you 3X the amount of green space, common green space, common open space.
Both sides.
Okay, great, that answers our question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If there's anything else, just let us know.
I, I had sort of, a, sort of a comment, and I'm, I'm, I'm actually, I, I would actually be interested in, in hearing what the rest of the Commission has to say on this, in the event that, that we decided to go with, with option A, which has this sort of little parquet on each side.
Is there another question for?
No, 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 no.
Thank you.
Thank you, though. In the event that we tried to go with, with option A versus option B.
We will again close the public hearing for discussion.
In, in the event that we decided to go with option A over option B, I guess my only, my only concern is that this being an open site, and having, you know, a park area kind of back off into the corner, I, I'm concerned what that may be inviting in, in, in the long run from a, from a public safety standpoint. For, for me, I'm, I'm much more interested in the parking considerations, if there's, if there's less space for people to hang out and feel comfortable, and, and, and when I say that, those, those people, I would, I would say would not be residents of this particular location, I, I, I believe that that may be a better outcome from a public safety standpoint than putting in additional green space, despite the fact that I may, quite frankly, prefer having additional green space, but I, but I think that, given where we are, given where we are, the, the public safety considerations that we have, the concerns over, over sort of increased homelessness in the area, I, I don't know if we're, we're inviting more of a problem by, by adding that in, and so I, I would, I would like to hear what the rest of the Commission has to say on that issue.
I think it's imperative that they do have that, as Commissioner Wang was saying that they have, people have pets, where are they going to go? They have to have pets, a lot of them will probably have small children, they'd want to take them there.
And we could, we could always add that they put efficient lighting in those park areas, too, or perhaps we do, you know, we do one or the other.
Or you can put a gate around the little green areas, but I, I think that aesthetically won't, wouldn't probably go, but I, I think that they are important to the project.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion in the quarter. I don't have the right wording. So I'll make a motion to, before I read the verbiage, but I'll make a motion to include, in, in, in support of the applicant agreeing to it, that the option A be included on boats, both sides of the back areas on the left and right, and that efficient lighting be placed there, so there, so if patrol, police officers have to patrol the area inside, that they could see clearly. I also like to add that we put efficient lighting, that if the homeowners were to shut off their lights, there, there's a pathway, pathway lighting accessibility throughout the property, but specifically on Cameron Avenue, and that we, and in accordance with the General Plan Number 20-04, Precise Plan Number 20-09, Anticipative Track Map Number 83216, and Tree Removal Permit Number 21-03, and the might degrade, negative decoration of environmental impact with the, with the additional reversion, re, re, sorry, revisions that I make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
And just for clarification, this is to recommend that the Council approve with the additions Commissioner Gutierrez has raised.
Okay. And I'm running to a minute to add whatever.
Was that with option A or option B?
I think it was option A.
Option A?
Yeah.
If, if, if I, if I could propose a, a few additions, I, I, I would like to see that, 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 that the wall that goes around the perimeter be a, at, at least a six and a half foot tall cedar block wall, and, and if you can do the, the, I always forget, the, is it the, the, the split face, if memory serves me right, yes, and then I, I would, I would also propose we add language with regard to the maintenance of the rear trees to the CCNRs, requiring that they be maintained such that they do not encroach upon the single-family residences immediately behind the premises, and then I would, I would also add in a, I, I think this was proposed, I'm not entirely certain, but a CCNR regarding noise that's consistent with the West, West Covina municipal code. Any changes to the CCNRs in that regard would require consent of the City Council, the City of West Covina, and then I, I, I had mentioned this with regard to concerns for public safety over at the Vincent Project, and, and, and I think that this is something I'd, I'd like to see be rather consistent, and that's with regard to the allowance of security cameras and, you know, potentially, you know, if you do, if you guys did a partnership with Ring or some, some other entity that allowed for that in, in the property to, to, to sort of satiate concerns about, about security and, and public safety therein, I, I think that would be, I think that'd be, be, be helpful, but at the very least, allow the CCNRs, or have the CCNRs set forth designated locations on the premises where residents can place security cameras and potentially hookups for those. Oh, and then with regard to the, the, the rear lining, I, this is just a, a personal preference of mine, frankly, Brian, take it or leave it, but I, I would prefer potocarpus over cypress, I, I just think it's cleaner, and my experience with cypress trees, they, they tend to be filled with squirrels, rats, et cetera, et cetera, particularly after a long period of time, and they're kind of a maintenance headache, particularly if you're on the backside, so I, I would, I would make that my, my amendment.
Great, yeah, so I would like to amend my motion to include Commissioner Lewis's comments, part of my motion, and also include that no parking, no parking signs be posted throughout the property to ensure no cars are parked in front of garages, and that they, I think it was, and that, I think it was already included, but to include permit parking, permit proc, oh, sorry, permit proc, oh, sorry, permit parking plan, and also enact some sort of enforcement with a local towing company, but yes, so that's my motion.
I'll second.
Okay, Paulina, can you poll the Commission?
Let me see if I got all of the, the motion complete, so it's a motion to do option A on both sides in the back of the property with sufficient lighting, and then to have pathway lighting specifically along Cameron, but also throughout the, the site.
And especially in the park area.
Correct, yes. The wall along the perimeter to be six and a half foot cedar block wall with split face, language in the CCNRs to maintain the trees along the rear property line so that the maintenance is, so that they, they don't overgrow into the backyard neighbors, CCNRs to include noise restrictions to be compliant, I believe, with the city code.
I believe that's, that's 10 to 8 a.m., if memory serves me right.
Okay. Allowance of, for security cameras, and then you wanted to change the tree along the rear from cypress to?
Potocarpus.
Potocarpus, and then to have no parking signs be posted throughout the property, and then have permit, permit parking plan, and have it enforce, enforcement policy with regards to towing.
Yeah, and just for the cameras to create, for the homeowners association to create guidelines, because we don't want a homeowner to place a camera looking at someone else's window or something.
So we're okay with that change?
Right, yeah.
Okay, and policy, okay, so I have motion by Gutierrez, a second by Lewis, Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Aye.
Commissioner Hing?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lewis?
Aye.
Chair Becerra?
Aye.
Motion passes by a vote.
Final action on this matter will take place at a public hearing before the City Council on a date to be determined. That concludes our public hearing item, there are no non-hearing items on this agenda, so we will go to Commission reports, comments, and miscellaneous items. This is a time when any member of the Commission may bring a matter to the attention of the full Commission, that is within the scope of the duties assigned to the Commission, any item that was considered during the agenda is not appropriate for discussion in this section of the agenda. No Commission discussion or action can be considered at this time. If the Commission desires to discuss an issue raised by its speaker or take action, the Commission may vote to agendize the matter for future meeting. Would any of the Commission, Commissioners like to make a report or a comment? Okay, so then we move to community development, Paulina, are there any items to report to the Commission?
Good evening, yes, Chair, there's a couple items I wanted to update the Commissioners on, with the reopening of the State of California, the city's opening up our facilities and getting back to providing our community services, programs, and events. July 3rd, we are going to be hosting our Sportsplex and Independence Day celebration at the Sportsplex facility, it is from 4 p.m. to 9 p.m. It's, the event will include a family fun zone, live music by The Smoking Cobras, a celebrity softball game with the City Council, and you guys are welcome to join and play if you would like to in the softball game, and food will be provided by food truck vendors, and we're also having El Cholo Restaurant provide food and drinks at the event. So that will be Saturday, July 3rd, at the Sportsplex, in observance of the Fourth of July holiday, City Hall will be closed on July 5th, that following Monday. And also, we are bringing back our summer concert series, so the first one will start July 3rd with Smoking Cobras, the, the summer concert series, it's each Saturday of July here at the Civic Center, Saturday evenings, the lineup is on the city website, and then I forgot to mention for the July 3rd event, pre-registration is required, so if you could please go on, onto the city website, www.westcovina.org, and it'll guide you how to register for the event, and the lineup for the summer concert series is also online, and then for any updates about, as we open up and we bring back programs and services, you can follow us on our social media accounts at West, at City of West Covina, or on our city website for updates. And that concludes an update, and there's no City Council actions pertaining to the Planning Commission to report.
Any word on when we'll bring back fireworks to the Fourth of July?
We'll have to see how the budget comes back, so, at this time, no.
Since there is no further business to consider, this meeting is adjourned at 9:13 p.m. Thank you.